Okay, good afternoon. We're called to order the Rockport Select Board Meeting of Monday, April 12th, 2021. We're still working under the pandemic guidelines. The first thing on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing and it is 5:30. And so I hereby convene the public hearing. The first item on the agenda is a new liquor license for Taboo Restaurant Group doing business as Taboo Taqueria with Jessica Crane at Five Country Inn Way. And Jessica is here.
I am here.
So Jessica, would you like to tell us about what you're doing? And then the board can ask questions.
Absolutely. Yeah, so on May 1st, we are opening a, it's called Taboo Taqueria. It's going to be a Spanish slash Mexican themed restaurant, not totally unlike what was there before, but a little bit more authentic. We have some local homegrown talent that we're going to be putting in our kitchen. We're really super excited about the new menu items that we're going to be having. We're going to be using all local foods, local farms. Our hope is to use local breweries for the beer and wine. We're doing, so I'm not sure if any of you had been there previously when it was the Blue Sky Cantina, but there's two levels to the building. There's the downstairs dining room and then the second floor is the dining room, but also has the bar. And then there's a very small patio. They had a small bar out there, which we've just emptied out. So it's just kind of seating now. We're not going to have any liquor outside because it's not really set up in a convenient way. It's not user friendly. So we're only going to be having liquor in the upstairs where we're going to be serving. Of course, if people order margaritas and such, they will be, the alcohol will be transported to the tables, of course. All of our servers have had at least five years' experience serving. Our bartenders, we have three bartenders right now. They've all taken the serve safe classes. They all have, I think between all three of them, none of them have less than 20 years' experience tending bar. They're very familiar with the guidelines of checking people's IDs and, you know, making sure that people aren't served, over-served. They're very sociable as far as making sure that people are going to be behaving correctly, not leaving intoxicated and all that kind of stuff. Not sure exactly what you're looking for. It's my first time doing one of these, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
That's fine. Questions of the board?
The only thing I would have said on the application, the only thing you listed was a school. And there's actually two churches that are closer to the school.
Okay.
The closest being in a straight line, like three tenths of a mile, so.
Okay.
But other than that, no problem.
Okay. Nothing from your end. We don't take a motion at this stage. We take a motion during the actual board meeting. So all we'll do is ask questions here.
Okay.
Any other questions of the board? Okay, and Michelle, did you have anything? It looked like you, oh, sorry. It looked like you took yourself off mute, so I thought. And Bill, do you have any questions from the public?
I don't have any. I don't know if there's any other public that are on the, in the meeting that have any questions.
Okay, thanks, Jessica. We'll move on to the next one. So the next one is the new liquor license for CICCI for Inc. We're doing business as Ports Pizzeria, Rockport, Sante, Calandry, and Jeffrey Teal at 139 Commercial Street. And Jeffrey is here.
Yes, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So you want to just tell us about what you're doing and?
We have the Ports of Italy Restaurant at 141 Commercial Street. And the building next to it has been renovated for a small pizzeria. And it, it's capacity, everything's on the application. There's very little seating inside, maybe four to five tables at most. And the biggest, probably most of it's going to be takeout, I would assume. And then the, on the application, we have an enclosed deck around the, around the perimeter of the building. And there'll be some tables there. And then on the, on the main street side of the property, the contractor's building up a, there'd be a kind of a stoned in area with some, probably four picnic tables there with a post and rail fence around it. So if people want to sit outside and eat their pizza, they can do that. It's going to be strictly pizzeria because we have the full-service restaurant next door. This license is for just beer and wine, not for spirits. And the building, we've got a, it's a custom pizza oven. We have another pizzeria in Boothby Harbor and it's, it's similar, except it does have an actual bar at the pizzeria in Boothby Harbor, but there will be no bar here. And it's more, it's, so there won't be any just alcohol or beer and wine served. Most people are going to have pizza and then they'll have either beer or wine or soft drinks.
Okay, thanks. Questions of the board?
I have none.
I have just a housekeeping question. Is somebody watching, admitting new people because a board member on the school board texted me that they're waiting to get into the Zoom call?
Yes, I'm generally going to let them in when we get closer to those agenda items.
Okay.
Just so they.
Fine, I'm, maybe I'm here illicitly, but.
Yep, we let people in when it's time for the agenda items, as Bill said. Thanks. Anybody else on the board with a comment? Okay, any comments from the public?
I don't have any.
Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll close the public hearing. It is 5:37 PM. All right, the, we're in the, back into the regular part of the meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the town manager's report.
Deborah, do we want to excuse our guests from this part or, and have them watch the live stream so they could be outcome? Or how would you like to do that?
Um, I tend to think that they should, they can excuse themselves if they like, but when we get to acting on the licenses, in case there's any further, oh, it's a consent agenda item. So I'm assuming there's probably not going to be any questions, so.
If there were, we'd have to pull it off the consent agenda.
Yeah, you might just want to hang out for the, for a few minutes, I think.
That's fine.
Okay, so let's do the town manager's report.
Thanks, so you do have the written report, so I will just highlight some things and then add a few just to, so everyone's aware, after the board approves the, has approved the town meeting warrant, there'll be a public hearing on May 10th at 5:30 in front of the select board. So if any public have any questions about any of the articles, it will be on the town meeting warrant, which is by referendum, there'll be opportunity for that. The LD 94, which was our firefighter excise tax bill, came out of committee last week with it ought not to pass. So basically, that's dead in the water. I talked with Mark earlier about this. We can always try again, that's all I can say. In your materials, you had a parks brochure that was recently developed by the Parks and Beautification Committee and was printed by Lincoln County Publishing. Just wanted to highlight that and those will be distributed throughout the, throughout the community. And we'll also include it as an insert in our next newsletter that goes out the beginning of May.
It looks very nice, I thought, really nicely done.
Yeah. Thanks to the Parks Committee for that, and I think especially Susan Cock and I think her husband or?
And her husband, Jeffrey.
Yeah, yeah, so appreciate their work on that. Certainly is nice to see. A couple of other things that's not on the written report. I did award the fuel bid to Dead River. This year, what we did is we packaged all three of our fuel bids into one bid package. So that would be number two, heating oil, propane and diesel for the public works vehicle. Number two, heating oil, we've locked in at $2.14 a gallon. Propane, we locked in at $1.45 a gallon. And diesel, we locked in at $2.29.8 cents a gallon, which I think are all very good prices. This is always the time of year to do it and get some decent prices. The deadline for the Rockport Elementary Site Letter of Interest was last Friday. And we did receive, I believe, four letters of interest, including one holdover from, from the last round, if you will. So Brian, Dan Cause, our economic development specialist, and I will be looking at those tomorrow, getting the information out to the RES Task Force and going from there. That's really it for my report, other than what's in the, in writing.
Right, any questions? Comments? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is whether or not we have any public input on non-agenda items. Bill, have we gotten anything?
I don't see anything.
Okay, the next item is amendments to the agenda. Anybody have anything they want to take off the consent agenda or other amendments?
I'll just note from the published agenda, we did add the executive session for personnel matter.
Yeah, that was added today. Okay, so we have a consent agenda with a number of items on it. Somebody like to make a motion?
The board approved the consent agenda as presented.
Will second.
All right, any discussion? So roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great, so your liquor licenses are approved. And thank you very much for your patience. And we will go on to our next agenda item, so you can watch the board meeting on the live stream or whatever, if you wish.
Good projects for Rockport, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. We look forward to having you guys in.
Yes, we look forward to.
Good luck.
Guys open, all right.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, bye.
All right, so moving into action items. So first is an application for Paula Coin for the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee. And I see she has joined us and thank you, Paula. And thank you for your application and thanks for being willing to do this. Would you just like to say a few words about yourself? I know that you submitted the application, but it's kind of traditional.
Okay, let's see. I live in West Rockport. My late husband and I built a house here about five years ago. And I've been a lifelong gardener. He was a landscape architect, which oddly enough has very little to do with plants and a whole lot to do with, I don't think, engineering, but he did work with plants too. So I have some experience and desire and I'd like to meet some new people and learn more about what makes Rockport tick. And I'm particularly interested in creating spaces that bring people together. And it seems like that's something that the Parks and Recreation Committee is focused on to.
Thank you.
And I don't know anybody except for Denise. Hi Denise.
I think Paula's going to be a great addition to the Parks Committee.
Right. Any, any questions for Paula?
Paula, thank you for a good application and enough detail so that we know the story.
Yes, thank you. The Parks and Beautification Committee is a hardworking group of people, so.
I gathered that from the agenda that I saw. Very hands-on.
Did we receive as a board a recommendation from the chairman of the Parks Committee?
Well, Nani did it formally. I know she's very supportive of this.
Because that's usually the protocol for nominations of candidates.
Yeah, sometimes not, but it's, it's becoming more of a protocol than it used to be.
Not that I want to add another, not that I want to add.
What, Mark?
Not that I don't want to, not that I want to add another year onto that, but shouldn't that be 2023? For a three-year term?
No, she's filling a vacancy.
Okay.
All right, I will move that the board appoint Paula Coin to the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you. I think I will, thank you.
Take care.
You too.
All right, the next item is to act on the MMA Workers Compensation Safety Incentive Program Resolve Form. Resolve, so that is pilpost.
Yes, so last year was the first year that the town joined the Workers Compensation Safety Incentive Program. That was the first year of the program. Because we're fully shape-certified townwide, we automatically qualify for Tier Two, which includes a seven and a half percent reduction in our workers' compensation insurance premiums. Tier Three includes having a wellness program for the town, which we are working on and is almost complete. And that'll get us again to Tier Three, which comes with a 10% reduction in premiums. But this is simply the annual resolve that the board needs to approve for us to participate in the program.
I move the board approve the MMA Workers Compensation Safety Incentive Program Resolve as submitted.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. I said Denise seconded, any further discussion? All right, roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the warrant article for Midcoast Community Internet Coalition Interlocal Agreement. We have this separately on here. It's included in the warrant articles that is next up on, next up on the agenda. But we wanted to make sure that the board, you know, had the opportunity to review the interlocal agreement itself. And so we listed this as a separate agenda item. You know, when we approved the guiding principles, we've talked about this many times, and we approved the guiding principles, I don't know, back in March, I think. And one was to create a regional utility multi-town effort. And it has to be done through the interlocal agreement. I mentioned at our last meeting that we would have the interlocal agreement approval on the agenda for this, for this meeting. It calls for Camden and Rockport to be the charter municipalities that with voter approval in June would create the regional utility. After that, then the board of the utility will, you know, make decisions with respect to the financial feasibility of adding additional towns and so forth and so on. So if there's any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to also clarify that in the, in the manager's comments, we had an older article in there that said, shall the town authorize the select board to enter into an interlocal agreement with the town of Camden for the purpose of creating Midcoast Internet Development Corporation? Since I wrote that, we've had other communities that may perhaps be charter members. So the new language that actually is in the warrant, the town meeting warrant basically says, takes out the town of Camden and in place of that puts other municipalities. That way, we're covered, depending on who wants to join in as this evolves fairly quickly. And that was approved by the town's attorney as well.
And Camden should have this on their agenda, I think on Tuesday, next Tuesday, with the same language, hopefully.
So one question and skipping right to the back of Exhibit A. Upon the charter municipalities contributing funds as of the date of the agreement, do we have that money budgeted or is it, where is it? Where is it? Where was it placed?
Yeah, we have 15, we have $15,000 currently, $7,500 from a grant, and then $7,500 as a match to that. It will be encumbered, it's in this year's budget. And then we've got in the FY '22 proposed budget, the other $20,000. So we have that there.
Yeah, so and Camden did the same thing. So we each have the $35,000 from this year's and the next year's, as Bill noted. And the date of the agreement will not be until after, you know, until after the ballot. So that will also be concurrent with the approval of the budget.
Is there an expectation that others that join in will be contributing something to the cause?
It's, it's, it's a decision that's up to the board, Mark, because, you know, sometimes you're dealing with a town that doesn't have the ability to, you know, wasn't contemplating this last year, so didn't have the ability to budget for this year. Sometimes those towns don't have the same funding capability that we have. So it's going to be up to the board of directors to, to determine the stipulations. In some cases, that depending on the town, there might be a connect main grant that they have available that we can apply for, which could be, I mean, it could be a million dollars. So, you know, there's just no way to, you know, to figure that.
I guess, you know, sort of worst-case scenario, if you get beyond the $70,000 and you need more, it would be good if some of the other people had skin in the game, at some point down the road.
Absolutely, Mark. I mean, I'm going to tell you, I'll be right straight up about this, that, you know, we've got that American Rescue Act Plan funding that's coming in. And we're going to, I mean, Denise and I are going to come back to the board and request that the board take a substantial part of that funding that's coming into, into Rockport and to contribute that. And we're doing the same with respect to Camden, you know, trying, and we're also going to the county. Because, you know, the thing is, you need seed money. $70,000 isn't going to do, get us anywhere, really. What you need is seed money, which, you know, you think about buying a house, you need to put 10% down. Well, if this is a $20 million build, you know, you got to put 10% down. So, so, you know, we could spend the next five years trying to do that through private investors and it'll be seven years or eight years before we get broadband. Or we can take this, sorry, historic contribution of these, of these funds that were really, you know, intended for infrastructure. And we can invest for what is an investment for three generations. So anyway, you'll, you'll hear us come back to the board on that. But my point being that there is a very definite possibility that the board of the utility can then take the position that if Camden and Rockport, let's say, decide that, you know, they're going to contribute 50% of their ARP funds to the utility, then they can require 50% or more from those other towns too. And they'll be prepared to, you know, make things. And, and those are based on population, so it's a nice measure of contribution.
I move the board approve the warrant article for Midcoast Community Internet Coalition Interlocal Agreement for the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second it. Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is to act on the annual town meeting warrants. Did you have anything that you wanted to introduce, Bill? Or we can just do this by a motion, right?
You can do it by a motion. I'll just highlight the different, different sections, if you will. Obviously, the beginning, we have the election of select board members, budget committee, library committee, school members. The ordinance article for the sign standards is Article Three. The planning board finally did have their public hearing and vote on that after a couple of different attempts. One, they didn't have a quorum, another one, we had the internet outage. But they did finally get the meeting in and their recommendation is seven, four and zero against to recommend that. Article Four, we've talked about the non-binding referendum article, and then it gets into the budget article, starting with Article Five. That goes through to, through Article 13 of the budget articles. Starting with Article 14 are your business articles. And this is just the typical stuff that you see every year. Article 14 is, was new last year because this basically is a continuing resolution. So that if any budget article fails, we're asking to spend an amount not to exceed three-twolths of the previous year's appropriation. That way, we have funding until we can have another vote on any budget article that might fail. Let's see. I'm just looking through, sorry. Article 26 is where I put the interlocal agreement that was just discussed by the board. And Article 27, this is something that should have, should always, in my opinion, be included in any town meeting warrant. It's basically authorizing the select board on behalf of the town to apply for, accept grants from state, federal, from nonprofits, and to sign the appropriate paperwork and to spend the funds for the purposes of the grant. So I put that in there this year, simply because, again, number one, it should be a business article every year. But number two, this allows the board to accept the American Rescue Plan funds when they.
Bill, I noted that on Article 26, it still has in there the language about the town of Camden, which was the prior language.
Yeah, and we have the, at Diane's desk, we have the corrected one for you, for all the board members to sign. So it does, it is corrected.
26 will be replaced with the language that we just approved, which really just takes out the town of Camden and puts in other municipalities.
Right.
What we can, what we can do from a formal basis is just amend the motion for the corrected version.
Yeah, that would be fine.
All right, look, I move the board approve the warrant article for Midcoast Community Internet Coalition Interlocal Agreement. I'm sorry. I apologize. I move the board approve the annual town meeting warrant for June 8th, 2021, with Article as presented in this document, with the revision on Article 26, removing the reference to the town of Camden. Sorry, my dog went bonkers. And, and replaced with other communities.
Or municipalities, I think is the term.
Other municipalities.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, great. Jeff, your, your dog is a, is an instigator here.
Yeah. 75 feet away from me, you know, 100-plus pounds.
All right, the next item is to act on the Moratorium for Seaview Cemetery. Bill?
Yes, and Linda is here also, but I'll open discussion of this. So in March of 2018, the, the select board at the time had approved a moratorium for the Seaview Cemetery, basically barring any lot sales to other than Rockport residents. That expired in January 2021. And we are asking that it be reinstated for a two-year period of time. So that the thought is that we would get the columbarium in place, built, constructed. the thought is that we would, uh, get the columbarium in place, built, constructed, and then we would be able to open it back up so that we could have, um, Camden residents, for instance. Have have often rec- uh, requested to buy lots or cremane locations in that cemetery. So, um, the two years would give us plenty of time to get the crematorium in place, get rules and regulations, look at the fee schedule, get those adjusted, um, and then go from there. So Linda, certainly if she has any, um, further comments can can weigh in as well.
You meant to say the columbarium, correct?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, not a crematorium.
Oh, I didn't even notice that you said that. Okay, and Linda, um, I guess she doesn't have anything to add.
I move the board reinstate the moratorium for Seaview Cemetery for the period of April twelve, twenty twenty-one to April twelve, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? Oh, I didn't even notice that you said that.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, uh, roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Great. So we're moving on to the discussion items. We have the school budget overview with Superintendent Libby. And we have the Chair of the Board, Patrick McGafferty here, and Brianna Gutierrez, who's still, she's the Vice Chair of the Board, right? And Marcia Dietrich. And I think that's all of our guests. So thank you very much for, um, joining us this afternoon. And, uh, so Maria, do we, um, hand it off to you?
Sure. Do you want me to be able to share my screen so that I can, uh, go through the presentation?
Yeah, Bill, can you do that?
Yeah, you should, you should be able to share now, Maria.
Okay. Okay, so, you know, hopefully we can leave most of the time for questions that you guys might have, but I'll, I abbreviated the presentation per your request pretty significantly and just kind of have the main points. So I think I'll be able to go through it pretty quickly. And I'm kind of doing both budgets at the same time where I can. So, uh, we always, uh, you know, put a lot of care and consideration into the budget. And our basic filters that we use are what's in the best interest of our students, what do we need to maintain a safe environment? Particularly this year, what have we learned and how can we best allocate our future resources, um, given the pandemic? How does this budget impact our long, long-term planning and what's fiscally responsible to our taxpayers? So our two budgets have come in in the following way, SAD twenty-eight, which are K eight district for Camden and Rockport, has come in at a two-point-six-two percent increase to taxpayers. I mean, the expense budget has come in a two-point-six-two percent increase. And the taxpayer impact is two-point-one-eight percent over last year. And that's for SAD twenty-eight. And the five-town CSD has come in at a one-point-seven-eight percent increase to the expense budget and a taxpayer impact of one-point-eight-nine. As you know, that those, that those are the overall tax impacts, but they impact each town differently.
Maria, could you go to the presentation mode, please?
I'm not sure if it's gonna.
It should have left, there you go, thank you.
Yeah. Last time I did a presentation, it wouldn't allow me to do that. So, this screen shows our, um, expense budget and taxpayer impacts over the past ten years. Next year's budget is bolded, and then there's a ten-year average in the column furthest to the right. One thing that's important to note is in twenty seventeen in the CSD, oh, I don't know how that happened. We had a negative four-point-five-one percent impact to taxpayers. That was the year that the state started subsidizing our high school debt service. And that's really the year where we saw the taxpayer kind of break from paying for the high school. We will have one payment left next fall. But when we stop paying that, we will stop getting that revenue source in the equal amount from the state. So it'll be a net wash. It shouldn't impact the taxpayer impact at all. The impact was back in twenty seventeen when they started subsidizing our debt. So I'm just gonna go through the details for SAD twenty-eight first. Highlights of this budget are that we are planning to add a nature-based pre-K classroom. We've never had pre-K as a public school offering in our district, and we're gonna start with one classroom next year. Wage increases account for the largest share of the budget increase. Our health increase came in at zero percent, and we are budgeting a buffer of two percent for potential changes in health insurance costs. Health insurance can have a pretty significant impact on the budget because, you know, if somebody has a baby and it has a family policy, it more than doubles the amount where where we end up paying for insurance. So we're putting in a little buffer. We actually have had a lot of, um, younger teachers and a lot of babies in the past several years. So do we just don't know what's gonna happen there. We also paid off a bus lease. We do have some increased expenses due to the new use of M E T. And we do have lower interest payments on all of our construction loans, which lowers our debt service a bit in the SAD twenty-eight. These are each of the cost centers in our budget. The articles that are usually voted on individually at the, uh, public budget meeting, which we're not gonna have this year. We're gonna have a remote public hearing like we did last year. But this outlines all of the changes to each of the articles in the budget, which yields the two-point-six-two percent overall expense increase. Our revenues are made up of two different varieties. One variety is our non-assessment revenues. This is the revenue we get from sources other than taxpayers. And that includes tuition that individual parents might pay to send their children to our school districts. We get a lot of tuition from other school districts. Um, actually, that's the CSD that gets a lot. We get a little bit from other school districts in SAD twenty-eight. Um, we get some interest on investments, transportation revenue that comes from the CSD, rental income that also comes from the CSD. And just a few other things. The state subsidy is a big one. You can see we got almost a hundred thousand dollar increase in our state subsidy this year, which is very helpful. We're planning to use two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of our fund balance to help, help offset, uh, taxpayer increases. And maybe the one thing to note in there is the rental income is going up by quite a bit. And that is because the, um, M E T building is going to be used now instead of the bus barn for a number of spaces. The whole first floor will be used for the Zenith Alternative Education Program for the high school and the high school's Adult Ed daytime program. So that whole floor is being used by the five-town CSD, who will be paying rent to the SAD twenty-eight for that space. And their rent is going up because that space, it has a higher value than the current bus barn space does. And on the second floor, the CSD will be paying for half of the space for the central office. We also have assessment revenues. These come from the required local amount that's dictated by the ED two-seventy-nine that we get from the state. And for the SAD, that's just about seven-point-five million dollars. The town splits are based on pupil count. And then we also have additional local that's divided into two different things. One is the debt service and one is everything else. And the, uh, amount each town pays for those is based on valuation. So our total expenses, um, which our revenues need to match for next year will be seventeen million, two-hundred-sixty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. The way that this impacts taxpayers, again, on one of the first slides I had indicated, it's a two-point-one-eight percent overall taxpayer increase. And in the SAD twenty-eight, the way that that splits out based on what those requirements are in terms of the town allocations is that Camden will have a three-point-four-two percent increase and Rockport will have a point-six-seven percent increase. And that's really because in, uh, in the SAD twenty-eight, Camden's valuation increased and Rockport's decreased. Based in the state splits our valuation between the two districts. So the way that they split it, Camden's increase and Rockport's decrease at the K eight level. And Camden's pupil count also increased by two students and Rockport's decreased by eight students. So that widened that spread by ten students. And that is the difference in the impact that those two things have. So again, the required local amount is based on the pupil count, and that's because both towns are minimum receivers. And I have a little, uh, diagram that shows that. So Camden's pupil count went from three-seventy-five to three-seventy-seven. And Rockport's went from three-forty-one to three-thirty-three. And therefore Camden's share increased on the required local amount. And then also increased on the additional local, which was based on valuation. And you can see what happened to the valuation in the ED two-seventy-nine in both towns. So both of those factors, um, meant that Camden's share increased more than Rockport's. The impact that that has per hundred thousand dollar home value in Camden is twenty dollars and one cent. Or for the median single-family home in Camden, it's sixty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. In Rockport, the impact per hundred thousand is four dollars and fifty-three cents. And the median single-family home is twelve dollars and fifteen cents. Now I'll basically go through the same thing for the CSD budget, which is the high school. Highlights in this budget are, again, wages increase, wage increases account for most of the increase that we see in this budget. Health increase came in at zero percent in this district as well. Again, we budget, we're budgeting a two percent buffer. The cost for Midcoast School of Technology, the operating costs decreased this year for two reasons. One, our share slightly declined, and the operating costs actually declined. We are paying two social workers with our federal money, so we've added those two positions at our high school, but we're using federal money this year and for the next two years, we're to allocate federal funds to those two social workers. As I said in the last presentation for the S SAD, um, we have higher space costs for Zeniths in the central office for their lease amount. So in this district, those costs are going up, and in the SAD, it's an increase in revenue. We also decreased our electricity costs due to the solar projects that we are involved in. And there is a decrease in Midcoast School of Technology debt service. And this is a summary of each of the cost centers in the CSD budget, which yielded a one-point-seven-eight percent increase. On the non-assessment revenue side for the CSD, you can see the second line, which is tuition from other districts, is, uh, quite a bit higher than it was in the SAD. The SAD, it was thirty-seven thousand or something. In this district, it's five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. We have about fifty students who are attending the high school who pay tuition. And our marginal costs are pretty low for that, so it ends up being a good deal for the high school. Even though it's also a good deal for those districts because they, the state law reads that you either have to pay the cost to educate students or the state average tuition, the state average cost to educate, whichever is lower. So the state average cost is about eleven thousand dollars. So, um, parents, actually, parents and school districts just don't have to pay that as much as residents pay. But we get a lot of revenue and the marginal cost is pretty minimal. And you can see the state subsidy didn't increase by quite as much in this district as it did in the SAD twenty-eight, only by fifty-one thousand dollars. So the total non-assessment revenues were only up slightly at one-point-three-six percent. And then the money we raise in taxes, which totals ten-point-eight million dollars, is made up of what's required in the ED two-seventy-nine. And the ED two-seventy-nine provides us with percentages of how we have to allocate all of the costs between the five towns. And in this district, it's the same whether it's the required local amount or the additional local amount. So we're really only raising debt service for the Midcoast School of Technology because the state really pays our debt service at the high school. And then we raise an extra three-point-one million dollars. The total expenses at, in the high school are thirteen point, well, thirteen million, five-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. So that's how much we need in revenues as well. So the taxpayer impact here actually hits Rockport really differently than it did in the SAD twenty-eight. In this district, even though the overall taxpayer increase is one-point-eight-nine, Rockport's, um, amount went up the second highest of the five towns in this district. And again, it really has to do with both the valuation and the per pupil, the the number of students. In the high school, the number of students from Camden actually declined, and the number from Rockport actually increased. And so there's a spread there that went the other direction for Rockport. And, uh, that can really make a difference. This is actually how it makes that difference. If we look in the, um, five-town CSD, Camden and Rockport, because they're minimum receiver towns, all of the costs they pay are based on the pupil count. And that's because the state determines what the cost is per pupil in each town to educate the students. And then you look at the town's ability to raise taxes through their valuation. And in the case of Camden and Rockport, the valuation is greater than the cost. So Camden and Rockport only have to pay the actual cost where the red line dotted line is, but that cost is based on pupil count. So in Camden and Rockport right now, everything is based on pupil count. And if Camden Rockport's valuation declines significantly, that green line might be lower than the blue line. And then all of a sudden, valuation would matter more. But right now, pupil count is what matters at the high school for Camden and Rockport. And you can see Hope Appleton and Lincolnville, the cost based on their pupil count is greater than their valuation or their ability to raise taxes. So they only have to pay what they can quote-unquote afford to pay. Again, indicated by the red dotted line, but in their case, you, they end up paying based on their valuation, and then the state kicks in the rest of it in state subsidy. And this is just a representative graph to show how it works. But in those towns, Hope and Appleton have a much bigger peach area than Lincolnville does. Lincolnville is very close to being a minimum receiver. They get a little bit of subsidy, but not, uh, nearly as much as Hope and Appleton. So this is actually the data for what's happening with valuation and pupil count between last year and for next year, between the year we're in, the ED two-seventy-nine in the year we're budgeting for. And really what matters is the relative changes between and among the five towns, not the absolute change in any single town. Cause a town's pupil count might go down, but if everybody else's goes down by more, they still might be carrying the biggest load. So it really matters what happens in all five towns relative to each other. The impact per hundred thousand is outlined in this slide, and you can see in Rockport, the impact per hundred thousand is eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents or thirty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents for the median single-family home. Then we also did this slide, which is the cost to each town for their students' education. So we look at what the town is. What the town is actually contributing from taxpayers. How many students from that town are attending? And what that yields as the average cost per student. You can see that the overall cost is nineteen thousand seventy dollars. And you can see the differences in how much each town actually pays per student. The adult ed budget is part of our budget as well. And this year, the expense budget that taxpayers are covering is in the top portion of this chart. And it's three hundred and seventy three thousand eight hundred and forty two dollars or a slight decrease of two point six two percent. There are additional expenses that are covered by things other than taxpayers. So the grand total is actually four hundred and forty five thousand five hundred and thirty three. But the um the adult ed program gets grants and people pay for the enrichment classes. So there is money raised in other ways. And for most of the towns, the amount that they're paying for. In revenues next year is going to go down a little bit. Um, in the case of Lincolnville in Rockport, it actually goes up. Our next steps are that. The boards, our school boards approve the budgets, the CSD approved the budget last week. And the SAD is scheduled to vote on the budget on Wednesday of this week. Then we'll have a remote public budget meeting on May eighteenth and then the referendum vote on June eighth. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has, as I'm sure are the board members who are here. Jeff, I, do you want me to call on you? You're you're muted, though.
Talking to my mute button. If you go back to SAD twenty eight's non-assessment revenues, and I think you mentioned a little bit, I wondered if you could go a little bit more. On that particular slide, uh over half the. Full revenue increase is coming from rental income, an increase of about sixty two thousand. And it's a big jump from the prior year. Could you just? Talk us through uh what what you see is going to contribute to that to the greatest extent.
Yeah, this amount right here. That we're talking about sixty two. That is because. The amount of space being utilized by the alternative education program in the central office is. Increasing. And the space is markedly better space. They'll be in a newly renovated building that Camden and Rockport taxpayers have paid to renovate. And we are charging rent for the space that's at a market rate. And that market rate, I don't know if you've ever had the pleasure of visiting the bus barn. But it's not exactly nice space. And the space in the MET building will be much nicer and a lot more and newly renovated. So that really is a reflection. Of the increase in that rental for the space from the high school district.
Alright, so that agreement's in place and that money's locked and loaded.
Maria, I had Mark Kelly here, I had a question if you don't mind. I know you said you had a grant for your, I believe, two social workers. Was that a hundred percent grant or was there a match?
No, this is we're using money we got from the federal government in the COVID relief funds.
So it's a hundred percent by the government, then there's no. And after the three year period, do you anticipate? Keeping these people on or is that yet to be determined or? Do you have some sort of a, I mean, I'm assuming that two people with wages and benefits is a. Easy hundred thousand dollar bill. Do you anticipate keeping them on or do you know yet?
Well. This year that we're currently in. When we were creating the budget for this year, we actually had included a social worker. One social worker. And when we had to make cuts before we actually presented the budget publicly last year. We cut the social worker because we had to make some cuts. Then the federal federal COVID relief funds came along in the spring. And we thought like, well, we'll get a social worker because students were dealing with a lot of mental health issues. And we had enough money to get two social workers and there was a need. So my plan has been all along to go back to the original plan of trying to add. One social worker into the budget when this federal funding runs out. What actually happens at that time I is yet to be determined.
True, true enough. Thank you.
Patrick, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to back up uh what Maria said on that and also share with you a discussion that we. Have had um on the board as in. Um, and actually uh with Maria as well, um who brought up a really good point uh about this because. We start to examine whether or not. Um, we're going to really embrace our role as a school district as a. Um, not a hub of mental health, but anyways, get that involved with two social workers like Chief Kelly said. To the tune of a hundred grand apiece. And um so we have to take the community's temperature. We want to start, this is the beginning of, it's two years that is for Maria.
It's two additional years after this one.
Okay, so we have three years to determine if this is a worthwhile expense. You know, people are saying they want to. Invest in mental health in the school. This kind of is the form that it takes. And we're really watching to see if it works. It's a big expense. It's a two hundred thousand dollar expense easy that's going to come out of. Thin air, three years down the line or two years from now. Um, it's 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 something we're really looking at and happy to. Take your temperature and hear your thoughts on those positions on the way.
Michelle.
Yeah, it's Michelle Hannon. Thank you. Uh first of all, Maria, thank you for uh coming and walking us through this. It's my first year going through this, so I appreciate it. Can you go back to the ten year budget increase slide? I just have a question on that slide on twenty twenty two and it might just be a a error. Um, but the impact to tax, it says two point eight oh. Is it supposed to be one point eight nine? On that top.
Yep.
Okay, alright, I just couldn't get it to foot and I didn't know if that was the case, so. Um, that was, that was my only question. I wanted to just get that clarified.
Thanks for seeing that.
They don't call me Eagle Eye for nothing. No kidding.
Any other questions? So Patrick, I guess we'll still follow up and have our our meeting that we had planned.
Yep, um, oh, good, I get to, I'll just hijack Zoom quick. Bree, Marcia, love to hear from you on that. And I think that's it. I actually sent the um email to Becky Flanagan, not Rebecca Flanagan, so she already said um. He's ready, but we're all crazy right now. I'm about to explode. Um, with the, I forgot this, I was sanding some trim. Uh, and I forgot, you know, I had to even do this, uh but. Happy to be here, happy to have um that greater communication and. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for giving me a minute to talk debris and Marcia without having to make two phone calls.
Sure. Okay, great. Well, thank you all for um for joining us and we appreciate it and Maria for the very good explanation. Which I think was very understandable. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Okay, so uh next item on the agenda is the. Proposed harbor parking lot design and Bill Lane has joined us. Bill, do you want to start us off?
Sure, so uh after a couple of revisions and sidewalks and reviewing the plan. Uh, Bill has come come forward with some changes to the plan. They're very slight uh changes, but. Um, Bill, you can share the plan on your screen if you'd like. You should be able to do that.
Happy to.
And then just walk them through um basically the changes, I think, is what uh what we're looking at for. For the board and then they can ask any questions they might have.
Great, thank you. Uh, is that reasonably clear to everybody?
Yes. You'll probably want to make it um bigger when you, you know, wherever section you're talking about.
Yeah, I'll have to do some zooming in, so uh. Just the general uh outline of where we've been and uh what we're doing uh. Still proposing to utilize the parking spaces along Main Street. Uh, and construct this new uh tiered level area. Which would encompass twenty eight new parking spaces. Out beyond the pump station uh drive. Uh, highlighting the changes that are moderately different than the last time it was presented. This area is a little bit lar- enlarged so that there's a. A more level ground available adjacent to the pump station. Uh, in case there is a service vehicle that needs to be in there. Um, and so that will, uh, we we were tying in a little bit more. Uh, westerly and utilizing a bit more of the existing retaining wall in the prior iterations. This proposal will cut back that existing retaining wall as much as possible and make the cut begin. With this portion of the new uh retaining wall. Also new and depicted on these plans in the overall plan view are the location of borings and probes. Uh, uh performed by the geotechnical engineers uh at Summit. And uh that data will be depicted, you know, the the long and the short of. Uh, what was discovered is there is ledge, but it is not in proximity so that we would have much or any. Anticipated ledge removal in constructing the walls. Uh, there is in this slope, a substantial amount of lime tailings. Which will need to be excavated in the reinforced zone behind the high um retaining wall. And uh that is a reasonable approach rather than trying to. Um, remove it all. It's just where where the re- reinforcing material itself needs to be placed. It would be excavated and removed and where it would be underneath uh any s- any of the. Base rock of the retaining wall, the base sections of the retaining wall, it would be removed. Uh, the plan has been detailed to show um a more oblique sixty degree parking. For uh the parking spaces along Main Street. Hopefully that would encourage folks to make safer. Movements in and out of the parking spaces. And not try and enter them uh from Central Street and not try and. Exit them to proceed west on Main Street, which would be, you know, currently. More likely to happen with the ninety degree ninety degree spaces that are currently there. So hopefully this is a net improvement to the safety of utilizing that area for spaces. Uh, behind that, we do show an area where we're. Uh, making sure the drainage is handled appropriately um and grading water off. Um, so the big heavy gray line depicts the retaining wall that forms the kind of the cut in the bank. And then this heavy gray line is the retaining wall that forms the fill push out of the bank. To create the level enough area for the parking spaces in between. We do show. A little bit closer in um a series of connected steps and handrails. So that uh footpath can be constructed. Um, along and adjacent from uh sent from Main Street. Utilizing some part of the existing footpath that extends down and. Obviously is diverted so that it does not uh reduce the uh. The amount of parking spaces that we're able to construct and then is tied into the parking area. Uh, at the turnaround and then continues on and ties in. To the rest of the walkway that makes it down to Harbor Park. So that new footpath is delineated with some stormwater management adjacent to it again. And a location plan for steps and handrails. Um, and then tightening in just one more time, uh we have detailed modifications to. Uh, the entrance. The curb cut, as you know, is relatively narrow. Uh, this dotted line here depicts the existing curb cut. And by some lights, the limitation is that there is a concrete grade beam. And concrete pillar and pipe rail railing along this segment of the approach to the bridge abutment. And we are proposing to remove all of that to the bridge abutment, so. Approximately fifteen feet of concrete grade beam. And pipe rail would be replaced with uh more straightforward guard rail treatment through here. And um I believe this is the plan set that's in the in the select board package. Uh, Mike Young and I have walked it uh again and we will actually make this even a gentler slope uh curve through here. And pull the guard rail a bit further away. The other uh. Uh, bit of information that is new and different, I'm gonna switch. Um, to a different drawing set. If I can get there. Bear with me, pardon.
Well, Bill Lane is doing this. Bill Post, um, you know, we've talked about um. A um, a kiosk for um paid parking that would help, that would. You know, pay for this within a particular period of time. Where do we, do we have a place where we are planning that the kiosk would go? Have we talked about that?
We haven't really looked on the plan where it would go, but basically where where it would be located would be. Between the pump house, really at the entrance of the uh actual parking area itself. Um, and there's plenty of space to put that because they're very, they're very small, actually.
But where would people typically exit to, would they exit down at the bottom, Bill Lane?
Expectation if if they're if they're gonna um use this parking area, I would expect that they would come up and be here.
So so Phil Post, wouldn't that mean that you, to make it most convenient for for people, that you would expect the kiosk to be on the other end?
For convenience sake, yes, but then the issue is when they're driving in. They're not seeing the, you know, the paid paid kiosk right away. Um, so, you know, we'd have to look at that and we can certainly talk to the parking consultant a little bit to see what what they recommend. And what they've seen and, you know, in their experiences in other areas.
Okay. Anyway, Bill and Lane, you were showing us.
Uh, so I was just going to add a little detail on the proposed planting. Um, we do have an opportunity for some freestanding. Uh, evergreen trees. Adjacent to the walkway. Um, each of the planters are provided with. Uh, or each of the the retaining walls has a planter block top section that can be. Um, planted in with either a uh a juniper type treatment or something that would trail over the wall. Um, and so that was the expectation is that we would uh plant. Um, the top of the walls. So that they would have a little bit more of a softening effect from uh from a plant edge or a trailing.
And of course, you were. And of course, you were involved Parks and Beautification or whatever, right Denise?
Yeah, you know, I have to confess, I immediately thought of a high sidewalk where there were all those great plans, and all we've ended up with is a dirt area that is.
Yeah.
Maintained, so.
Yeah, and boy, I hate junipers. I hope it becomes something other than junipers. They're so nasty looking. Okay, well, anyway. But the point i- the point is that I, I wouldn't, um, I, I, I would imagine that we would include Parks and Beautification as opposed to assuming it's any particular kind of planting. But I take your point, Bill Lane, that you, that we would have something there to soften. Mark.
We do have that opportunity, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, and then just, uh, just as a clarification, just in case folks have not seen it before, owing to the amount of slope that's, uh, in place there, there's a, actually a, a laid, uh, dry retaining wall right here that's going to be reworked, so all of this, uh, line work here depicts new grading adjacent to the wall, so that is all newly disturbed areas that I would expect would be, uh, just re- revegetated with a conservation mix to initially. If folks have more objectives in terms of planting, uh, specific, uh, treatments, they're, they're certainly able to, but just to get that ground stable initially, and then someone could take over and design.
Bill, Mark Kelly here, Bill, I have a question on your, uh, on your entrance that you had shown. Um, yeah, right up in that area.
Yep.
Um, you had mentioned removing, um, the metal guardrail, not the guardrail, but the post, the rail that's there now.
Yep.
So my question is, we know that the bridge is going to be rebuilt in the next couple of years. Anything we do there, will it impact the rebuild of the bridge? And do we need to get approval from the state before we remove their rail?
Uh, we would. Uh, we've had one conversation initially, um, I spoke with Mr. Rodriguez, and he indicated, um, that they would take a look at the plans and, uh, and provide comments. Seemed, uh, uh, amenable at this point. Uh, we did not get into the specific, uh, idea of addressing this grade beam pipe rail, uh, treatment, but it is a separate and distinct component from the bridge abutment. Um, so we wouldn't be working, uh, any change at the bridge abutment and possibly making, you know, their lives in terms of, demoing out and transitioning, um, from that old construction a little bit easier. I don't think that that old pipe rail would have been what they would be replacing with, with this new design.
No, I, yeah, I'm sure they'd replace it with something, but given that it was there to begin with, it must have been there for a reason.
Certainly.
So I hopes to, I'm in hopes that we'd have some blessing from them.
Yep.
Before we really, uh, move forward.
Yep, certainly.
There are other.
The guardrail would go in in its place.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Um. Okay. Uh, thanks, Phil. Lane?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. All right. Um, we're done with that. The next, um, item on the agenda is the personal property tax collection, so.
We.
Yeah, we.
Sorry? In the agenda item, it said the town manager will discuss potential options for funding the construction of the parking lot that we just looked at.
Yeah, I can touch base on those quickly.
Sorry, yep, we're not done. Okay.
So the, the goal would be to fund the construction without using taxpayer money. Um, again, we don't know what kind of cost we're looking at at this point, because we haven't gotten that far along in the process. But, um, there are basically two, two types of funding that can pay for a bond for that construction. The first being, um, the downtown TIF, the Village TIF District. I'm, let's, let's just assume for a minute that the hotel that's under construction is completed at some point. Um, that will, uh, essentially, that, that will be increased assessed value, which will be captured by the downtown TIF. And I know the construction cost is around six million dollars, don't know what the assessment will be, but if we see, if we assume six million dollars for an assessment increase, that would generate at today's tax rate about ninety-six thousand dollars a year. They would go into that downtown TIF account. And so if you estimate that there's, I'm gonna just throw a number out there. And again, this is not an estimate for the, for the parking lot, I have no idea what it was gonna cost. But if you say it's five hundred thousand dollars, and you did a ten-year bond, um, I ran some rough numbers today through the bond bank, and you're looking at a payment of about fifty-five thousand dollars a year. So, you know, the, the hotel construction alone would pay for the parking lot over a ten-year period of time. Um, the other, the other aspect as well would be a revenue bond. So if we're talking about having paid parking there, uh, then we could, um, potentially have a revenue bond, identify how much revenue we would get from the paid parking, um, using, you know, a parking consultant to give us some estimates, um, and, and float a revenue bond. So those are two off-the-top, um, thoughts about how to pay for any potential construction of that that would not affect the taxpayers. Keeping in mind with the downtown TIF, that money has to be utilized with, within that TIF district or, um, for projects that benefit that TIF district. So it could be, um, you know, additional streetlights, or it could be sidewalk improvements or a parking lot, for instance, of this nature. So, um, it's a very, this project is, is basically tailor-fit for a downtown TIF, um, project. So, and again, both of those would not affect property taxes, which obviously is the goal.
And then perhaps in a way, it's, it's almost, I mean, this is all a lot of ifs and suppositions, but it's as if the hotel is helping us with finding additional parking for the town.
Right.
But then some of the concerns that have been expressed the other way around.
Exactly. And we're expected that if, if the hotel does get constructed eventually, which it is under construction, um, that other businesses will most likely expand within the, the downtown TIF district as well. So then you have more increased value, you have more money that goes into the downtown TIF for more improvements and more work that can happen, so.
Yep, and parking's critical to all of that.
Sure. Other questions about, about that at all? And again, we don't, you know, I'm just throwing the five hundred thousand dollar number out there, because it's a large number for a construction, for a parking lot, construction project. And, but with those retaining walls that have to be built, you know, again, I don't know what number that's gonna come in at, but.
But it's, it's very good illustration of, um, how, one of the ways in which you can fund it without taxpayer funding.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other comments? Okay.
So, sorry, I couldn't get to the mute button faster. Um, so what are the, what's the path forward?
Well, I, assuming that the board is okay with the design, uh, of the parking lot, then we would, um, begin, um, most likely either getting some estimates or putting together some, um, bidding documents, uh, and have the project put out to bid. And then we would actually have, you know, numbers that we could put to it, um, and then start the process from that perspective.
What's the time period for that process?
Um, I haven't talked to Bill Lane about the time period for that, so I really couldn't, I couldn't provide an answer there.
Presumably we wouldn't start any construction until after this summer season.
Yeah, no, absolutely not, it would not. I mean, we, we, Bill Lane and I have talked about that, and Mike Young as well, you know, about the fact that any construction that would take place would have to be either, you know, f- fall or spring, um, depending on which part of the cycle we get into. And we also have to, obviously, we have to figure out the financing, whether that would be a, you know, a bond, uh, question on the November ballot. You know.
Well, if, if I might, I mean, you know, considering where we're heading in the next fifteen or twenty minutes, I mean, we're, we're adding a lot to a plate that, uh, might not be able to handle it.
Yeah, well, I can get, I can get, you know, an idea of timelines and timeframes, and we can put something together, so we can look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of this is, uh, engineering and, uh, self-activity.
Right. Yep.
Denise, did you say something?
I was just saying, we've already made the investment in the Gartley endorsement, you know, Bill Lane's work, I mean, obviously.
Right.
Keep this project moving, but I, you know, we also have construction windows, especially in that downtown area that we have to be careful.
And funding, you know, funding question windows as well, so.
Yeah.
So, we're not taking a vote, but is there, I take it there's a consensus that supports this project for us to be looking at next steps then?
Yeah, keep on keeping on.
Okay. All right, Bill. You will keep on keeping on.
Yep, I'll get a timeline together as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next, uh, item is the personal property tax collections, Bill.
Yeah, so in your packet, um, you have a pretty simplified plan. I didn't get into a lot of detail with it, but I wanted to show you, um, really the high-level, um, process for collecting delinquent personal property taxes. And these, and these are from, you know, even a, a two-year, two-year-old to older, uh, as well. So the first step, obviously, is to determine what personal property taxes are potentially collectible and what need to be deemed as uncollectible. Uh, and the uncollectible ones would come to the board, um, to be written off, basically. So we'd have to look at the statutes, obviously, uh, we'd love, have to look at businesses that may have been, that they're no longer in business, and maybe they have taxes that are, you know, three years old or four years old or something like that, that weren't paid, um, and, and look at all of those aspects, and then put the list together. Um, and that would be the first step. Uh, the second step would be to send in, to send certified letters out with demand for payment. I put that demand for payment in there, because that's a key when it comes to any potential court filing. Um, so we have to have a demand for payment, uh, when a statement of, uh, each of the accounts mailed. Uh, that, that would involve researching the Secretary of State's records for the appropriate recipients and addresses of the businesses, obviously. Um, you know, we, we may have them, they may have moved, we just want to make sure that we're sending it to the right, uh, locations. I've also put in there that we should develop payment arrangements if applicable. So if we've got a business that, um, has been trying to work with the tax collector's office, um, and has been making payments or has been in contact with, about making payments, I think that benefits the municipality, in that we don't have to have any additional costs to try to collect the, those, those revenues. They would have to be written payment arrangements, obviously, um, with some penalties in there or clauses that say they would be canceled if, you know, one payment's not made or two payments, whatever we can come up with, with a, with a plan. In, in addition, and this, this goes within, the, the next step is kind of two A, I've put it. The tax collector would have to be filing UCCs within the statutory two-year window, uh, which has not been happening. Um, and so we would have to research the process for that and the requirements and develop the schedule of dates and, uh, action times, what has to happen, when it has to happen, so that, you know, that's, that becomes a reoccurring, um, effort, very much like the tax liens are now. And eventually, you know, we get to the point where you're, you are going to file civil action in small claims court. The town's attorneys, um, I, there's, like, I don't remember the lady that I spoke with about processes, but certainly can work with, um, the tax collector's office to, um, walk through the process, set up a process, um, show her how to, um, do the research or how to do the UCC filings, all of that type of thing. And then also work with her in eventually filing civil actions in small claims court as well. Um, you know, maybe the first one or two, uh, the attorney helps with that, and then after that, it's, uh, simply just the town doing that. So that's essentially what we've put together. Uh, and again, Linda is here on the meeting, if she'd like to weigh in. She did, um, look at this and, uh, made sense, uh, made sense from her perspective as well. Then again, I don't want to speak for her, but, um, but I think that's, um, this is the best, best pa- path forward. So.
Go ahead, sorry, Mark.
Mark?
No, if, if I can, um, this has been a bugaboo of mine, obviously, which is why we're talking about it today. Um, I would like to see on the twenty-sixth, at our next board meeting, you know, a list of those that we need to take off, because they've gone beyond their six-year limitation, I think is the number of years. But also want to see the letter, I, I want the ink to be on the letter the morning of the twenty-seventh to be going out, uh, I don't want to have to wait another meeting or two into May. You know, let's, let's get at it.
Linda, did you have anything to add? No, she's unmute. Okay, anybody else? All right. Um. Okay, we'll keep on, keep it on on that, too. Um. The select board liaison reports, next on the agenda. Who would like to start? Mark?
I'll kick us off.
Michelle, okay, Michelle.
All right, I'll kick us off, just a couple. Um, as Bill said, uh, planning board has met a couple of times. Um, we did get the sign ordinance in, they're doing a site walk this week. Um, I'll just put a plug out there for planning board and others, that we do have committee openings, so if anyone is interested, please, uh, get signed up. Um, comprehensive plan, I'm sure Jeff will cover on that as well, making really good progress. Demoed some new tools, uh, to be able to use for community input, which I think will be really important as we go down, uh, this path. And, uh, West Rockport Fire Station, we have not met, so no update from there. And that's it for me.
Great. Denise?
Next. Uh, economic development, Matt, um, always lots of exciting, um, projects and ideas and trying to sort of figure out what, um, well, just lots of good energy. Uh, shared workspace, something that, uh, a fair amount of time was spent on, the idea of sort of what you might call we-work or a need for people here who don't want to be working in their house all the time, but love the idea of working remotely from, you know, a New York or Boston area. There's some discussion of I, uh, Route One and Ninety and Route Seventeen and Ninety is sort of being the two barbells of the town, and so we want to focus on projects that benefit, um, both of those areas. Obviously, one and Ninety is the RES site, some discussion of, um, some thoughts for Seventeen and Ninety. Um, so just lots of, lots of good energy, obviously, the broadband initiative falls within that. I mean, some of these things started economic development, and then they sort of, you know, we've got the RES task force dealing with the RES site, which is under the umbrella, or it, it, it's, it's part of the economic development plans in the town, and then broadband. Um, then Opera House, uh, we met, a lot of, some talk about some marketing materials, taking advantage of sort of this lull when we can't yet know when we can start using the Opera House. Maybe we start using it for some town meetings, that, you know, not that town meeting, but some smaller groups. Um, uh, discussion about, you know, obviously, we're getting calls about people who want to do, have weddings. And the state Department of Labor has actually got some very helpful guidance on what is allowed, uh, at wedding venues, uh, under the COVID sort of, uh, issues. So, looking into those kinds of things, obviously, always working with, with Bill and the town to, you know, make sure that the Opera House Committee doesn't get ahead of what's permissible from the town and, but taking, taking advantage of the time to be ready to rent that Opera House when, when we can. And that's it.
Um, I'm just gonna jump in here, because I usually wait for you guys to, just kind of following up on what Denise said, since you mentioned, uh, economic development. Um, as you know, I'm on that committee, and, um, one of the things that, you, you heard, you heard what's going on with broadband, um, um, and I'm gonna tie that back in a second, uh, with economic development. But, um, there's kind of a core four, we call it the core four, that, um, those of us who are working so closely on the broadband effort, um, can. consider Thomaston and Rockland to be very important partner towns for us in the inter-local agreement. And things seem to be progressing quite well with those towns. And we hope that that core four will, in fact, all, you know, join the inter-local agreement. And then there's a core four plus one or plus two, because obviously, we want to involve some of the smaller towns because that's what, you know, that's in part what it's about, because you've got these smaller towns that don't have any broadband, you know, access, adequate access at all. In the meantime, you know, what's happening across the nation is that because everybody's looking at broadband now, there are, there is a real inadequate number of fiber installers, people who are trained to do the fiber installation and fiber repair when that's necessary. But all of the ISPs that we talked to, whether it's LCI or GWI or Pioneer, they all get slowed down in broadband installation because they don't have sufficient installers. So we have been working with the Camden, or with the Rotary, Camden Rotary, and Rich Anderson is very involved in that group, and John Goss. And he's very involved in economic development. And a couple of us suggested to them that what we ought to do maybe is to see about involving the Midcoast School of Technology and basically home-grow our own fiber installers. So we create jobs, local jobs in the community, and we have, we have fiber installers that can, you know, install for the coalition or the, you know, the, the regional utility, install for all of the various ISPs, et cetera. It could even become, you know, even a profit center perhaps for the regional utility. So, which helps everybody. So in any event, that's the kind of thing that we've been, we've been talking about. And Matt Siegel from Camden is, is really working closely with Rich Anderson and others to do this. They've had meetings with the Department of Labor. They've gotten the other ISPs hopefully on board to do a joint, joint, various letters to support what is potentially a $6 million application for STEM jobs in this area. You know, science, technology, and math. What am I forgetting? E.
Engineering.
Engineering, thank you, and mathematics. But anyway, the fiber installation would be a part of that that would go to, you know, the Midcoast School of Technology, not to the regional utility or anything. So anyway, so that's the kind of thing that, you know, that crosses broadband and crosses economic development. And it's really quite exciting, exciting. If we can get this program off the ground, there's a lot of great benefits that come out of that. That's it. So Jeff or Mark?
Yep. The Harvard Committee met before our last select board meeting, so I have no further update on that one. The Pathways Committee met last Wednesday. I was unable to get to that meeting this day, so I'm awaiting the notes from that meeting. Michelle already presented the top land activity. That's an every-two-week meeting event, if anybody wants to at least watch at some point in time to see where things are going. And that's pretty much it.
Mark? You're on mute.
Yes, there we go. I was on the road for the conservation meeting, didn't meet it, but there'll be good notes coming out of that as usual. Denise touched on the parks a bit, and I'm in hopes that we get a capital improvement committee meeting scheduled for probably late fall, so that we can get some input from them and whittle down our list and get prepared for next year.
Okay. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Before we do, and not to open up the consent agenda, but we do need to send thank you notes to the four people that recently resigned from the committees.
Yes.
Yep, already done, actually.
Thank you.
Okay, I will make the motion to convene an executive session pursuant to one MRS, Section 4056A, to discuss a personnel matter.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call Denise.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Bruce.